We have multiple names that we go by, but that is my role in the agency.
Dr. Jean Station, the county health officer.
Good evening, I'm Carla Roych, I am the public health response coordinator for Sweetwater County.
And me again, Judy Rogers, who are county management coordinator. We reached out a couple of weeks ago after we presented to our board at the end of February and gave a presentation on what we knew then about COVID-19, and this is such an evolving situation, and it's so fluid, that what we presented to Rock Springs City Council is completely different than what obviously we'll provide to you because so much has changed in just the two weeks that we talked with Rock Springs City Council. And we met with the commissioners today, we've been talking all day, so I hope my voice holds up for this information sharing. The biggest thing that we want to stress at this point in time is, is the social distancing factor, which obviously you guys are totally grabbing onto that and going with it, and the importance of that, and how it will help slow this spread so that the medical community is able to keep up with the cases as they come in to Sweetwater County. So currently, at this point in time, even it's changed from what we presented to the county commissioners, there are 11 cases of COVID-19 confirmed in Wyoming right now, two out of Sheridan County, seven out of Fremont County, and one earlier this afternoon was confirmed out of Laramie County. The cases in Fremont County, seven total, all, the first case that was confirmed is, and we haven't been able to determine where that came from, how he became sick, he was a resident of an assisted living facility. The seven that are identified all trace back to that one case. And so, there's community spread, obviously, in Fremont County at this time, which is concerning because we can't, we don't know where it comes from, we can't trace it to travel, we can't trace it to being in Italy, we can't trace it to being in Seattle or anything at this time. So, that's the information that we have right now about the cases that are in Wyoming. The testing for COVID-19, right now, there's three entities that we're aware of that actually collect this S and M for COVID-19, and that is done at the hospital, and that is done at Aspen Mountain and at Cedar's Health. So that constitutes of a swab that goes into your nose, and it's put into some viral transport media, and then that is sent out to outside labs. So the state lab can test for COVID-19, and so can outside labs like Quest, A-Rub, and LabCorp. And so, there is testing going on in the community, and there are tests being sent off. The hospital has a designated 24/7 hotline that individuals can call to see if they meet criteria to be tested, and then are prioritized based on what they divulge in that screening questionnaire. So, testing is, is based on a priority level. Priority one are individuals who may be hospitalized and are experiencing symptoms or healthcare workers that have been exposed to a lab-confirmed test. There's medium priority, you know, there's low priority, and the turnaround is going to depend on how much of a priority your test is at this time. So, there are multiple tests pending, and so, it's just a matter of time before we probably will have one here. Oh, I will share that number with you so that that's not just, oh, it's there, but we don't know what it is. So that number that the hospital has that is manned 24/7 is 522-8523. And they have a nurse that is available to answer questions related to, I have these symptoms, they go through a questionnaire and then determine if you, priority-wise, testing for that. Information sharing, as far as where you can get information, right now, we do have a public, our Facebook page on Sweetwater County Public Health is one source for information. The hospital has their Facebook page and a website, Emergency Management also has a Facebook page. We had a meeting earlier today with several different entities, working towards getting a unified, one-stop shop where residents can call and get information. So that's in the process and getting worked on, it's not quite up and running yet, but that's the goal, so that people know where to go, instead of giving misinformation or making up things that they're not sure where it's coming from. So we're working on trying to get a unified message so that it's all the same. It's, yes, that will be soon.
Okay, Reid, did you have a comment?
Yeah, one of the things that came up, just to confirm that we, at this time, we do not have a positive case in Green River or Sweetwater County.
That is correct.
Even though there have been tests done, can you also explain who's the first to know, and then what the next steps are, what you do if there is a test positive, so that maybe some rumors can not be going on?
Yeah, so I'll speak to one part of that, and then I'm going to turn it over to either Carla or Dr. Station. So, we're talking about coronavirus, and people will say, oh, coronavirus, it's just a common cold. Okay, so, there are multiple providers currently right now that are testing for coronavirus, and there's multiple different strains of coronavirus. So you may hear, oh my gosh, my neighbor tested positive for coronavirus, and they did, okay, but that is totally different than COVID-19 coronavirus. So, if you hear someone say, oh, I've got coronavirus, okay, maybe you do, but you don't have COVID-19 at this point. So there is a little bit differentiation between what coronavirus we're talking about. And some people will just run with it and hear, oh, it's coronavirus and it's here, but at this point in time, it's not, so.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Uh-huh.
Over here. On the 11 cases in the state of Wyoming, are they the COVID-19 ones?
Correct.
Dr. Station, could you mention again, just right into the mic, what you just said about the common cold?
The common cold is a coronavirus.
Okay.
So if you got a screening panel and it came up positive, and the cold, like she mentioned, COVID-19 is something different.
That's a very important distinction, because I, you know, as...
And, and again, what we're seeing is the unified message, and I think the site that they're talking about may be starting up and running very shortly, is going to be manned, the PIO, or first would be someone from the sheriff's department, who's going to pull all the information together and try to post it different ways, like in the morning and at four o'clock every day to keep the community informed. So, yeah, and, and then, he'll take things from our viewpoint, health versus even another, like, community area, like what grocery stores are doing. For instance, somebody mentioned Smith's in Rock Springs is going to be open from eight, or seven to eight, three days a week in the morning, just for seniors, to try to keep them away. I mean, just different ideas like that, and they're going to have that section that's like out of the Chamber of Commerce section too, that has just, you know, for your information tidbits in the community, and how different people are dealing, businesses and whatnot with it. Oh, a positive, okay. All positives get reported, if there's certain diseases in the state or nationwide, that if you get like measles or whatnot are reportable, and obviously COVID-19 is one, and that information goes to the state, and then it would filter immediately down to us if there were somebody in our community. And then, case contacts and investigation would be done by the state and with the local health department, trying to see what contacts and who else out from there needs to be tested. Once they're positive, they're in home quarantine for, you know, and until they're symptom-free. I mean, it's not like somebody's going to be on guard outside your house, the idea is you're sick, you stay home. And along with that too, is if anybody has, isn't just not feeling well, stay home. But if you are, and also, if you end up being tested, you still stay home until you find out your results. And then if your results are positive, that's where you stay. The idea is to keep people away from the hospital and just reserve the hospital for folks who need to be hospitalized and are very ill, because you don't want to overwhelm the system or spread disease in, in the system unnecessarily also. So that's why testing that is being done by the hospital is not being done in the hospital, but they have a site near the clinic down from the old College Hill Women on 3000 College Hill Avenue, where you get your number, you call ahead, and they come out, meet you in your car and test you there. You don't go walking through the hospital or the ER to get tested, it's an off-site.
Makes sense. Councilman Murphy?
Question I have is volunteer firefighters here in Green River, are we going to be notified, we do law lift assist and things like that, or go out on dregs or whatever else?
If anybody was exposed to someone with COVID-19, yeah, that's part of, is that what you meant?
Yes.
That's part of the disease investigation, period, going to contact contacts.
Right, because of the HIPAA laws, I just wanted to make sure we had a meeting.
No, no, that's not going to be a problem, we're in a state of quote emergency, you're going to know if you were exposed, and you will be tested, because the idea is to keep it from spread, you don't want your whole emergency support people spreading disease.
Right, we just had that meeting.
Or unable to work.
So I just wanted to make sure that...
No, and that was asked at our meeting with first responders earlier this evening, and, and that was emphasized, no, you're going to know, that's not, that's public health and disease mitigation.
Yeah, Mayor, that task force, basically, it's the Sweetwater County Resiliency Task Force that's working with these people, and it's, we have Officer Pacheco and Chief Omsley from Rock Springs, they have Sheriff Grossnickel, our chief Jarvie, as well as Assistant Chief Erdman on that side, working with the public health, and they're right now identifying, you know, who do they contact from education, who do they contact on business, who do they contact public health, coming up with that plan, and then also distributing communications, they'll be distributing communications somewhere around 9:30 to your, to Mayor West, to Como, myself, county, will send out information, try to put something out, and they'll do it again around 4:00, 4:30, having those meetings, so we're as well up to date with anything that's going on at this point in time, in terms of incident.
And from there, we'll go out to local media and a, and a site, and they were also discussing the 3-1-1, you want to mention that? No, it's not, but it's a consideration. They are going to be utilizing the 3-1-1 capability that the dispatch center has, where you'll dial that, and you're going to get a recorded message that we will update at least twice a day, and give what we open to anybody, we're also looking at the option of actually putting some live people on the 3-1-1, so you get one option, you get the recorded message, you get another option, and you get the live person who can answer your question. But like I said, none of that is, is ready yet. It will be very, very soon, it's all up and running, they just have to work out the technicalities of like who's handing the phones, that kind of thing, so, within the next couple of days, it should definitely be going. And that speaks to the issue of being informed and knowing how to protect yourselves and others, and what to do and decrease panic, so that there would be twice a day information coming out from your community as, as a group to work with the community, so people aren't getting mixed messages or false information isn't flying. So the idea is if somebody calls in to this 3-1-1 number, and they keep getting the same calls and the same concerns, you know, that's something you need to address at maybe the next morning or the four o'clock when these come out twice a day. And that might also cut down on some of the calls, because a lot of folks are getting just a tremendous amount of phone calls, it's just overwhelming.
How many, how many tests have been done, do you know, in Sweetwater County?
No, we, we do not, we are not notified at this time of how many tests have been performed. Dr. Harris and Governor gave a press conference. But she said that there was 82 pending, but that was yesterday, and so, and that was just with the state health lab, so then you have the Quest and the A-Rub and, and LabCorp that are also receiving tests from Wyoming, so at this time, we don't know how many tests are coming out of Sweetwater County.
So the 82 is the whole state?
Right, yep, yep.
Very good question. So, what other type of things can we do? You know, where I work, we're wiping down the counters, we'll lice all wipes, we're spraying the lice on the bathrooms, on the door knobs, wiping off all the, you know, panels coming in, so what other type of disinfectant can we use? Can we use peroxide? Can we spray peroxide on things?
So, the CDC.gov/COVID19 has an actual approved list of all cleaning agents that are approved to kill COVID-19, and so, off the top of my head, I wouldn't say yea or nay to peroxide, I would direct you to that website where you can get that list of approved cleaning agents that are good to go.
Because if we can't get it, we can't get the lice all wipes and the lice all spray.
Right. And you can always do a bleach solution, and that's an option, if you want to re-wet some clothes. So you can always, you know, dilute it per instructions.
Did you got to? Thank you. Some of the stuff coming out says it might be able to live on surfaces up to three days, so that's a...
Yeah, Councilman Zimmerman, could you have a...
Yeah, you may or may not be able to answer this, but I heard through the rumor mill today that someone did go up to the hospital to get a child tested, and that it was very expensive. Can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, I mean, where, did they go through, or they call in and find out? Okay. The hospital has an order slip, because most physician's offices aren't testing in the office, because you don't want people to come into your, or you don't have the supplies. There, it depends on who ordered it and how they ordered it, because off on the one side, there's a panel, kind of like soup du jour, what you want to do, and the other side, it's a reflex panel, where if they checked reflex panel, first thing that happens is you're tested for influenza A and B, and I think that might be $200 off the top of my head. The second one is what they call a fire panel that gets 20 different viral kind of things, RSV, coronavirus, rhinovirus, and that, I've heard, can cost $1,200. Then the third thing, if those are negative, because there's limited amounts of COVID testing, then you could go to that. When you get to the COVID-19, that can be anywhere from free to $125. There's no charge at the state lab, and there's, I think, different labs charge different amounts, I think the most is 125. So it would depend on what was checked by their provider, you know, if you said can't afford it, you check the COVID-19, and that's all, you know, what you get. The other is helpful for epidemiology, and initially, the state health department said we don't have enough, so this is the order you go in, and there still are limited quantities of testing availability, just depends if your provider orders it, are they going to go through that panel or just check COVID-19? So it can go anywhere from, I guess, nothing to $1,500 potentially, depending on what your provider checked.
The, in this case that I heard today, they must have checked all the boxes.
I would bet all of the above, and reflux down.
They said it was $1,900 is what they were quoted.
They checked the whole reflux, starting to go down your way.
Okay, I just wanted to, thank you.
That, that would be what I would assume happened. And that would be between them and their provider.
Exactly.
And testing recommendations are, are changing regularly, and so, in the future, they, as influenza season is starting to decrease, you're starting to see those numbers come down, they need to rule out influenza A may not be a requirement anymore, and it may be easier to go right to that COVID testing, but that, that hot alert or that help alert hasn't come through us quite yet, but that may be a change in the future too, where there are all these other tests aren't recommended or required, and you can just go right to COVID.
I mean, you still could now, but...
Yes, 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 you still can, saying, I just want, now that I have my influenza negative, then COVID, yeah.
Any other questions from council? Ladies, do you have anything else?
Wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands for at least 20 seconds, go out the door with a paper towel, and turn on the faucet with a paper towel, wash, sing a little song, actually, if it hurts, say a little prayer, if I'm allowed to say that, without getting in trouble, and, yeah, wash your hands and stay away from people, protect yourself, protect our vulnerable population.
Good.
Another thing I might mention that I saw on Facebook that I thought was pretty interesting, it was a Carmelite nun who said, "For 30 years, I've self-isolated." And she was saying, you know, the things that are positive about this, you know, you may spend more time at home with your family, you may catch a fun project, you might, you know, clean out the shelves, try to make a routine and make this time productive and as pleasant as you can if you're stuck at home. Like I said, if you are tested, you are at home until your results come back. If you're sick, obviously you're sick, but if you're just hanging around the house, try to make it where it's not wasted, and it's some pleasant time too, and a lot of family dinners, because you're not going to be eaten out much.
Good. Okay, we, we thank you guys, both for coming and giving us this information, and for all that you're doing, because I know that you're all going to be very, very busy for a while. So, thank you for showing up tonight and educating the public. Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilman Kilpak? Okay, moved by Councilman Kilpak, seconded by Councilman Zimmerman, but all in favor, say aye. I know this motion carries. City administrators report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I want to just give a thanks to all the city, people who are, you know, partners and stuff, the employees, basically, we're working under the pressure and stress of the still widely unknown pandemic we have going on. It was great to get some information here, hopefully people are listening, we did record it, we will share it on our Facebook as well, make some very good distinctions between, thank you for copping in your sleeve, by the way, very good indications or descriptions on COVID-19 versus others, you know, I think, you know, there's just a lot of, there is so much information coming out to everybody right now, and trying to disseminate it is difficult, sometimes having the experts talk about it really helps. They have, you know, even for us as a city, we have a lot of information coming very fast, some of the decisions that were being, that are being made are to help slow the spread of the virus, hopefully keeping it out of the county here, and hopefully not inundating our medical resources at the time, so that's what we have to think about on that side of it. The, the new program we have that's, has just gotten, has been set up with the incident command, should be helpful, we will make sure we, you know, we have a lot of information on our website, but we're going to, they're also developing a website that we're going to probably direct everybody to, just to keep that one common communication and where you can get information, you know, keeping it consistent for everybody throughout the county, just going to be a lot more helpful on that, so, that's all I have.
Thanks, Reid, and I know Reid's had a lot of late nights lately, so I'd really like to thank you and, and Kerry also, for, well, and Mr. West there has been consulted on a whole lot of things too, so, these three people that we do have here today, we need to thank for all that you guys are doing, because I know this, it's pretty overwhelming at the moment, constant meetings, constant phone calls. Councilman Zimmerman? Oh, pardon me, Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything?
Well, Your Honor, I don't have a report tonight, but thank you.
Okay, Councilman Zimmerman?
May I echo the thank you to all, we appreciate all you do, I appreciate your, your experience and your wisdom, thank you for all that you do, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And there's also these two ladies here that have different functions, and we really appreciate that, what they do outside, I want to leave that alone. I rely on the law the most. Councilman Burt?
Yes, I have two things tonight. I just want to give a thank you out to all Sweetwater County first responders, that's sheriff's department, city police departments, fire departments, and EMS in this entire county, because with the things that we've seen over the last couple of weeks, they are that line that keeps us safe. So, I just want to shout out to them. And then, another thing, Mayor, and this is just for Mayor and Council, as far as the workshop that we've talked about having next week, we were going to invite Stephanie and Cory Bullman and discuss the daycare thing, we talked about that for the fourth meeting, with everything going on, and then they, they understand what we're doing as far as a council to protect everything, and so, they're fully understanding, and they said that rather than us have that workshop for where they can't come, they would like to wait until things settle down, and that we can postpone that, and they reached out to me last night and said that that was fine, so.
Good, well, that's good to know, and it's April 13th or 14th, which is the following one, we'll kind of see where we're at then.
Right, okay. So, if you'll just give me a...
Okay.
We can decide to have another workshop that we can invite the public to.
That's a good one, because that is something that's been ongoing for a while, that those guys have been pretty patient.
And that was what I thought too, was, I thought them hearing this frustration was going to happen, she was very cordial last night, so.
Good. Councilman Chutron?
Yeah, I'm going to be long-winded for a second, I jot it down, so I'd like to share it with everybody. I'd just like to remind everyone that regardless of what is going on around us with the COVID-19 preparedness measure being taken, we must never forget that we are all still neighbors, families, friends, community members, and most importantly, Americans. We are in this together just as we are in any other crisis or natural disaster, we should be compassionate to those around us, we must keep a watchful eye for the select people who may choose to take advantage of the situation or those in need. We need to ensure that everyone has equal opportunity to procure the items needed to ensure their lives are not upended by the unnecessary hoarding and panic buying that has been exhibited as of late. We need to remain calm and focused, show gratitude, and exhibit humanity. We need to be mindful and ask ourselves if we are setting a good example for our youth, the manner in which we treat one another is of utmost importance and plays a huge role in how our younger generation addresses future issues. The next generation is much more likely to follow our example than our advice, so look for every opportunity to do something positive for those around you and set the tone by interjecting positive energy into an otherwise negative situation. Let us all be thankful that we live in such a great community within wonderful Wyoming, where we have an abundance of wide-open spaces with which we can explore the reach of our social distancing. In closing, please remember, it is never the situation we face, but rather the way in which we react that defines who we are as human beings. And I'd like to also echo everybody's thanks for the staff and the local medical, medical community and first responders.
Excellent, good comments, Mike, we appreciate that, that's really good. Councilwoman Mace?
He was, he was saying everything I was thinking, just seeing people when I was shopping and, and seeing that the toilet paper, paper towel aisle was completely ravaged, and seeing other people in the store and wondering, wow, they just wait till they got down, and I mean, I do that a lot of times myself, to wait till you're almost out, you know, when you go shopping and there's nothing. And so I was going to encourage people to check on your neighbors and, you know, check on your friends, and make sure they have what they need, you know. I'm, I do know people, or I know a person that wears toilet paper, so I can go get some, you know, but not everybody can do that, and I just feel sorry for a lot of people that maybe didn't get to the store and didn't get a supply, so I would hope everybody would respect each other and, and try to help their neighbor, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Lisa. Councilman Murphy?
Have to agree with what Mike said. The other thing is, I do know that the Sweetwater medics are offering, or the, should say, the Castle Rock medics here in town are offering to do shopping or gatherings of supplies for the elderly, if you have anything extra that you wouldn't mind giving up, you can get ahold of them. And then, I know police officer in my neighborhood, somebody dropped off a folder and a letter on his door that said, "You are awesome," and I got one too, so I'd like to thank whoever did that, I called my assistant chiefs and said, did all the firefighters get one? They go, we didn't get one, so, maybe it was just my neighborhood, whatever, but Honor Smart and myself both got one on our door, so whoever did it, I... So whoever did it, I want to say thank you for that.
Yeah, good comments to Town, Councilman Kilpak.
Without being repetitive, I just want to agree with what everybody has said here tonight, and then pass on one thing to Reid for being proactive with this. You've done a great job in being proactive, the jumping on this, using your staff, Kerry, everyone in the city, you guys have been first-class, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Takes a vote. Is that all you have to say here?
And I've got my seat.
Let me have your seat. I'll let him go.
Thanks, Kerry. So I'm not going to repeat anything other than we do need to focus and remember to protect our more vulnerable populations. That's a key of the whole situation. And we're talking about that all the time. We all know seniors, single-parent households, and people that are economically disadvantaged. Those are the folks that we really have to make sure that we take care of in this whole situation, as well as everybody else, obviously. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Councilman Chutcher?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Councilman Chutcher and seconded by Councilman Burr. Any discussion? If you're not at all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Good job.